Al Ayuntamiento de Los Ángeles. Hay cinco miembros presentes, Berthold, Grue, Labanche y Tamañez, para completar el foro. Hay más miembros del Consejo de los Ángeles presentes en el edificio de alboroto de venir a la sala. Para empezar la reunión.
Good morning, everybody.
Buenos dias.
Welcome to City Hall. Council chambers, it's the meeting of Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, April 9th, in the year 2002. The Los Angeles City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10 a.m.
El Ayuntamiento, la redacción de todos los martes, viernes y viernes.
We can also be viewed live from home on your people's station, channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage, or heard via account. Mr. Trump, please call the room. Berthold, Galantero, Garcetti, Grue, Han, Holden, Labanche, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry...
Bertrand Galantero Garcetti, Gruhan Holden, Laban, Miskowski, Pacheco, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Vice-Sign, and Medea, ten members present in a corner, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. This being Tuesday and the first meeting of the week, we do have a special salute to the flag and moment of inspiration planned. To introduce our special guests, to lead us in the flag salute, the chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, it gives me great pleasure to reintroduce to you, because when we were in Hollywood, you had the good fortune of meeting him before. Captain Pepe Baklag, who will step forward to the microphone here and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, today on the 60th anniversary of the Fall of Bataan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the States, in the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. To introduce our special guest to lead us in the moment of inspiration, the chair recognizes Councilmember Laban.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, we're honored this morning to have with us today the Archbishop of the Armenian Apostolic Church, Archbishop Pache Hossapien, who is here representing over thirty churches throughout the western United States, including Arizona, Nevada, and our own California, which represents over six hundred thousand people. And he also is a great constituent of the 4th District in the Toluca Lake area of Los Angeles. For words of inspiration, Archbishop, please.
Mr. President, City Councilmen, I am here to enjoy the appointment of my nephew as a commissioner, that's why I am here. And it's a joy for me to be with you. In this chamber, I have so many sweet memories, especially Mayor Tom Bradley and John Ferraro, who has been a very, very close friend. And I am sure they are looking from above, as you deliberate about the future and the harmony of this large community. I have been in Los Angeles over thirty years now. I have seen the city going through various stages. One thing that strikes me in this town, in this city, nobody is majority, all the minorities form the majority. And that Mayor Bradley and now Mayor Jimmy Hahn, they are so sensitive about the ethnic groups that they come from different parts of the world. And we here, we live as brothers and sisters. If we examine ourselves, God gave the biggest gift to individual, that's the gift of life. Not only he gave this gift of life to us, he made us different from the animals. He bestowed his divine wisdom and graces upon mankind. And he gave this world to us as a free human being, to use it, but not to abuse it. Furthermore, the good Lord expects from us that God's talents, there are three things we cannot do. First, we don't have the right not to use God's graces that he bestowed upon us. Second, we don't have the right to abuse God's graces. And the third, we don't have the right to use God's graces for selfish reasons, but misbehave for the glory of God. And here, the clergy, you and the public servants, together collectively, with love, determination, and humility, we will bring justice and peace into the community. The love of God must prevail in order to have harmony and peace. If today we have destruction in the parts of the world, somehow we lost the sight of God, and we are serving the evil powers. Let us fall, return back to simple adoration and faith. Abended knee, you say, oh, Lord, you gave this life, and you came to this world, you know, to do peace to the world. We thank you for gifts, we thank you for this life, we are determined to establish peace and harmony, so that the short life that we live, that will be very productive, and for the greater glory of God. God bless you all, continue serving. Always remember, always remember, that honesty always prevails in the world. And live with love, honesty, let's together serve the community, and bring harmony and peace and justice in our community and world. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. I believe we have a couple of presentations today, the chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I would like to ask the council to join us in recognizing a friend of the community, a friend of our office in Council District 14. Today, we are recognizing the great work of the Southern California Edison Federal Credit Union. The branch is in our first in Chicago, Boeheim's office. The credit union there is managed by Pasquale Garido. And we wanted to recognize them for being such a great partner with the community and working with our community-based organizations, and supporting them, and providing them information on how to better manage their money, also in working with our community residents and teaching them also how to better manage their resources and finances. Whenever we need them, come out to an informal affair, and be part of the education and information that we release at all of our community members. The credit union does hesitate to be a part of that. We also want to recognize them for helping take over the credit union, the community service organization, a very famous organization that worked very hard for many years, had a credit union. The Southern California Edison Federal Credit Union worked to take over those roles, and has built upon that the credit union that really supports and works with our community. So I wanted to recognize, we have a couple individuals, we have Bob Toohey, we have George Poet Toohey, and Lortz, and Rod Cooper, and Linda Otando. And so I just wanted to present them with a certificate of appreciation for their generous contribution, for helping over a thousand children and parents this holiday season also, and for their loyalty and dedication to our community. And for that, we're giving them a certificate of appreciation for all their great and generous work, community in Boeheim. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you, Councilmen. On behalf of SCE Federal Credit Union, we appreciate very much what you've given us today. We believe in the credit union, that being part of the community and helping people help themselves is a way to get them out of poverty, and help them come out of... Help them solve their own needs, and we appreciate very much. And Councilmember Garcetti, you should know that we are working with them to adopt our position of using the matrícula consular, consular, that we have been pushing so hard in the city. So just know, Councilman. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. The chair recognizes Mr. Garcetti for his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, Councilmember Reyes, I know Councilmember Pacheco has to step out from him, and myself. Today, I want to mark an important date, it's the 60th anniversary of the Fall of Bataan in the Philippines. April 9th, 1942, ninety thousand troops of the United States Armed Forces in the Far East, consisting both Filipino and American forces, soldiers surrendered after five valiant, courageous months of fighting Japanese forces. And they succeeded in delaying the Japanese forces' ability to move on to other places in the Pacific. After the Fall of Bataan, these valiant soldiers were forced into a march often referred to as the Death March of Bataan. And these heroic efforts were integral to the United States' ultimate victory in World War II. Fifty-five miles were covered in a brutal fourteen days, and an estimated thirty thousand soldiers died during this time. The survivors were forced into concentration camps. And later on, General MacArthur said that the participation of Filipinos, and of those who participated in the Death March, shortened World War II probably by fifty days, saving the United States at that time fifteen billion dollars, and thousands upon thousands of American lives. There are still many Filipino veterans living in our communities here today in Los Angeles, in places around MacArthur Park and Westlake, Temple Beverly, in parts of Echo Park, in the area that's traditionally called Filipino Town. And hopefully, in a point not too distant in the future, through an initiative of this council, we will actually formally designate Filipino Town. And many of these veterans today live without health care, live without the benefits that they were promised by the United States government. So today, we gather to recognize, to honor them, and to honor solemnly this moment in our history, in world history, to thank them for our freedom, and to promise them that we will fight for theirs as well. If I could indulge the audience and members for a moment of silence to mark the Bataan Death March, we'd most appreciate it. Thank you. I'd like to now turn over to Councilmember Reyes, say something, and then we'll hear from the veterans themselves.
Thank you, Councilman Garcetti, for inviting us up to the podium, recognizing our heroes. In a day where in our city, we have a large population of young people, and for us to have our heroes that are here today with us as examples, is just as important, especially when our young folks think of these issues, historic figures as figures of the past, to conceive of World War II scenes worlds away. The truth of the matter is their heroship and their acts as role models is just as pertinent today. So I want to thank our Councilman Eric Garcetti, and our heroes here, for presenting themselves, so that we can all learn from our history and our sacrifices. Mr. President, colleagues, as many of you know, in the northern part of Island Park, around the Eagle Rock border and community, we have a large number of Filipino veterans and Filipino families who are a great part of this community. We have what has been labeled in one part, a little place called Philippine Village, that we are very proud of, and all the services they provide to the Filipino community. And today is a great day to remember not only the sacrifices of the Filipino community on behalf of the United States and our army, but also to remind ourselves that we still have a lot of promises that were not been fully kept, that have not been taken into account, the veterans of World War II, and that we encourage our federal government and our congressional representatives to continue fighting for their benefits and make sure that we make them old like any other World War II veteran or any other veteran who sacrificed for our country.
Before we hear from the veterans, Mr. Laban.
President, members of council, I just wanted to thank, I'm part of this too, but thank the words, Councilmember Pacheco, about the veterans and their work that they did in the Filipino community and all this history, which is so important, your words too, and I want to say, Habagamaga Habu Salama.
Honorable President and members of the council, thank you very much for this splendid hour. At least, this will be a balsam to the painful and simple rejection by the federal government that we have rendered active military service in your states. The seventy-nine U.S. Congress passed into law the Resurrection Act of 1946, and it was signed by President Harry S. Truman, which declared that although we were members of the army of the Commonwealth of the Philippines, which was in the active military service of the armed forces of the United States, our personal services were not being active. We were not recognized as Americans. And yet, here comes the Immigration Act of 1990, which stated that after all, these services were active, but only for naturalization purposes. And with this law also, it recognized those who were dead, those who were maimed and disabled, and yet, they gave them compensation, one half of what the American counterparts received. Yes, I was there. Sixty years ago, I celebrated my twentieth birthday in the junction of Trailers 15 and 7, Mount Samat Batan. We ate an adobo of a meat of a monkey, which we hunted the day previous. Eating was so pleasant, considering that for the last two months, we were under a rush forage, depression, combatation, until we came to the last part of the park and saw the fingers of the monkey. It was just like eating a small child. I tried to spit out what was in my mouth, but the rest inside didn't come. And yet, today, I survived. Last February 14th, I celebrated my eightieth anniversary. But still hoping, that someday, justice will triumph. This honor, which you bestowed to us, will render the faith that we have in a democratic government, and we are hopeful, and with that faith, we will strive until justice and equality is ours. Thank you very much.
I can just present the certificate. As somebody whose own grandfather fought in the Philippines alongside some of these veterans we have today, this has a special meaning for me and on behalf of the city myself, the mayor, Council President Al Jusia, Councilmembers Reyes, Laban, and Pacheco. I want to represent the party of Mr. Pacheco, the señor Reyes, Laban, and me, to present this certificate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Clerk, for sort of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Miskowski moves, and Ms. Gruhan seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Laban moves, and Mr. Bertrand seconds.
Before starting the regular agenda, item number 36, a request of the city attorney to continue that closed session matter until April 17th.
Members' request to continue item number 36 without objection. Members' request to continue item number thirty-six without objection. On the regular agenda, commission appointments, item number five and six are appointments to the Maple Chang and Richard Brown to the planning commission. Mr. Clerk, before taking the commission appointments, we do have five today on the agenda. We do have two special guests from the state legislature with us today. I believe state senators Richard Alarcon and Gloria Romero. And I believe they're here on item thirty-seven. So without objection, let's take item thirty-seven out of order and begin with public comment. Senators.
Mr. President, members, thank you so much for allowing us to speak first on the agenda. Given that we have to get back to Sacramento, at least I have to get to a committee here in this afternoon. I want to first applaud the president and mayor for taking a quick action with regard to a very severe issue in the San Fernando Valley and throughout the state of California and that having to do with the disposal of radioactive waste material. I'm here to kind of paint the picture for you that, you know, I come to the settings and I see three people that I used to work with, and it was only four years ago. So I think I have to remind people a little bit about the history of somebody's action. Well, I don't have to tell you, Mr. President, but first of all, the San Fernando Valley has a long history of many things, but one is that it is the landfill capital of the world with the northeast San Fernando Valley having thirty-five either filled or unfilled landfills, many of which are active today. You have another item on this agenda that clearly is part of that legacy of how to manage the history of landfills and the fact that many products have been dumped in those landfills. When I was on the council, we fought to close the last public landfill in Los Angeles, Lopez Canyon, and a majority of council members supported that effort. And we have since learned that we can be successful as we deal with moving forward with trying to build a balance between understanding the need for landfills and at the same time acting responsibly with regard to disposing our waste in the most technologically feasible way possible, at the same time moving forward with new technologies to ensure that we are creating the safest environment possible. So we are here today to respond to Councilmember Diaz-Moloshin, to first of all support it, say thank you very much for recognizing the actions of the Select Committee on Urban Landfills chaired by Senator Romero. And I'm here to say thank you publicly to her. I serve as a member on that committee. She asked me to serve on that committee, given the history that I just painted for you. And I can tell you that I am here to commend her leadership in ensuring that California is dealing with issues of landfills in a responsible way. This particular item has to do with the disposal of radioactive waste. And the second thing that I want to do, aside from introducing my colleague, is to also ask you to go a step further. The fact of the matter is that the State Department of Health Services has set a very low threshold with regard to disposal of radioactive waste. The bottom line is that in a site that has been, that has finalized their federal process of cleanup, the state has adopted the federal standard. But the federal standard is much too high. At twenty-five milligrams, it basically means that a worker at a site that has twenty-five milligrams of exposure, one out of one thousand will be exposed to a cancer. Now, that's a cancer risk that is far greater than is acceptable. And so, at that hearing, Senator Romero and I asked Department of Health Services to reconsider their standard, and we are asking you here today to go a step further and adopt a resolution that would ask Department of Health Services to in fact increase the standard, make it tougher, and to ensure that those materials are monitored not only when they're at the contaminated site, but when they are moved from the contaminated site and certainly when they go to landfills. So I applaud your effort to investigate, to ensure that Bradley landfill does not have radioactive materials in it. If it does, that those processes be cleaned up. I want to share with you that I live two blocks from the site. I certainly don't want radioactive materials in my site. My mother's there, and I have other family members that live within a stone's throw of Bradley landfill. And so, I want to thank you. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Senator Romero, who has become the champion of protecting safety with regard to landfills in the state of California. This action that she is taking to have the hearing on radioactive, the disposal of radioactive materials is going to be a vanguard in this area. And I want to thank you again for sharing her vision and present to you my colleague Senator Romero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and again too, it's so good to be back in the city of Los Angeles, again too with many friends and colleagues, four charter commissioners, and as well two assemblymen elect. I look forward to seeing you in December in Sacramento. I'm here, of course, with Senator Alarcon to thank you and to thank the president, Padilla in particular, for the motion, to thank Mayor Hahn for his leadership on this issue. This really is a statewide issue. And Los Angeles is taking the lead by having this motion brought forward. You are, to my knowledge, the first city in California to address this issue right on. And I thank you and applaud your leadership. And while you address this issue and I support the motion to call for the investigation of dumping of radioactive waste at Bradley, I will remind you that there are some one hundred and seventy Bradleys in California because the regulation at question is one that is the responsibility of the state. It is the Department of Health Services, which in the dark of night, without consultation, last fall, brought about a new regulation which for the first time in California's history essentially deregulates the disposal of radioactive waste. We saw what happened with the deregulation of energy, electricity in California. I think we're on the same path to a public policy disaster. Your motion today helps as I believe to reverse that trend. But essentially, most people in Los Angeles and California think that their dumps are garbage dumps, not radioactive waste dumps. This is the message that we have to give back to DHS. Senator Alarcon and myself are here today to support you. We forwarded lots of information to you, including a videotape of the recent hearing in Sacramento. I hope that this will be informative and helpful for you. Ultimately though, it is the state of California that has to be targeted. Myself, Senator Alarcon, we have authored Senate Bill sixteen twenty-three, which essentially would repeal the DHS regulations and put them back to their strong standards. I'm asking that as well that you consider support for Senate Bill sixteen twenty-three as you consider this issue as well. And again, to one last word, I do want to, as state senator, take the responsibility that this is a state responsibility. We're working very hard to reverse this. This actually isn't even about the landfill operators because the regulation itself says without notice to anybody or advising anybody or even giving the operator the opportunity to refuse to accept radioactive waste. This simply says that the regulation allows for the dumping of waste without notice to anybody. So it really is a statewide concern and issue in Los Angeles. I thank you for having the leadership and the courage to take this issue on. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, these are two of our best hosts, Senator Alarcon and Senator Romero. I think we should give them a big round of applause for their appearance here today. I think we will proceed. The next two speakers are Dan Hirsch and Doug Corlken, in that order, please. Thank you.
My name is Daniel Hirsch. I'm the president of the Committee to Bridge the Gap, a thirty-year-old environmental group that is the organization that discovered this new policy of deregulating radioactive waste. I also serve on the oversight panel for the cleanup of the contaminated rocketite site that was the source of the radioactive waste that recently was disclosed to have gone to the Bradley landfill. I want to explain in example why this is important issue by focusing on this local incident, but then explain why this is a statewide problem that has to be addressed. In nineteen fifty-nine, there was a partial meltdown at a reactor here in the Los Angeles basin. It was kept secret by the Atomic Energy Commission. Only twenty years later was it made public when my group released photographs of the melted fuel. There is a quarter of a billion-dollar cleanup underway to try to remove some of that radioactive material. And in order to save money, the U.S. Department of Energy has decided to dispose of some of that radioactive waste in unlicensed sites. And so approximately six thousand tons of reactor building debris with residual radioactivity was dumped in local landfills here. About three hundred tons of residual radioactivity contaminated metals were sold to a metal recycler in San Pedro where they got melted down to consumer products. And all of this is because of a policy that the State Health Department has undercover of darkness adopted that deregulates large portions of the radioactive waste stream. I, for those of you who know anything about my past, know that I have spent much of my life fighting waste companies. But I have come here today in a somewhat unique situation to let you know that this one instance that has now become public was one in which the waste operator, the waste facility operator, had done nothing wrong. The wastes that were shipped to them that were radioactive were shipped without their being told because the Department of Energy and the Department of Health Services have a policy that those wastes can go without any disclosure. And that is what has to stop. The waste operators can't protect their workers or the public. We cannot protect the public. Even the Integrated Waste Board did not know that their dumps were receiving radioactive waste.
Just a moment. Sergeant, if you'd be kind enough to cause the chamber to be just a little bit more quiet. We can hear you. So we're going to ask you to proceed and do so with an eye toward the conclusion. And perhaps you could sharpen the bottom line and give us a sense of whether you are for or against the motion before us.
The bottom line is that there is a bill proposed by Senator Romero in the state legislature that would protect your landfills from receiving radioactive waste, Senate Bill sixteen twenty-three. It would reverse the Department of Health Services irresponsible policy of deregulating these wastes. And I strongly urge you to support that legislation and to have your assets in Sacramento help move it forward. Thank you very much. I have some material if I could have that distributed.
I'd like to that you would get the material. We'd appreciate it. And we thank you for your testimony. We have one person remaining, and then we have a list of persons who wish to be heard on the council, the number at five at this point. Doug?
Corcoran.
Corcoran, thank you.
It looks harder than it is.
All right, we accept all help.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, council members, Senator Romero and Senator Alarcon. I am Doug Corcoran. I'm a district manager for Waste Management, and we operate Bradley landfill. I am and we are, as a company, very concerned about the issues that were raised this past week regarding the possible disposal of low-level radioactive waste at the Bradley landfill. It's my job to protect our neighbors, my workers, our community, everybody around us from health and environmental potential hazards that are out in the landfill. I'm here today to tell you what we know of the issue, hopefully to put some fears at rest and to weigh in solidly on the side of improving the law regulating low-level radioactive waste disposals. At the Bradley landfill, we're in the business of accepting municipal solid waste, not radioactive waste. We keep radioactive waste out of the landfill. And presently, we do more than the law requires to protect the public against radioactive waste getting in there. We are also actively involved in helping get this new SB sixteen twenty-three developed and passed. Everybody in the room here and everybody listening, anybody who's going to read about this needs to know that we have not and we will not knowingly accept ways that exceed radioactivity standards set by the Department of Health Services or other appropriate agencies, wherever those standards are. Now, while we were unaware of the nature of the rocketite shipments at the time they came to the landfill, we're confident that the public is safe from the material that was shipped to Bradley. The material in there was mainly concrete, dirt, some asphalt, or some other demolition stuff. It was checked four different times. It was checked by technicians at Rocketine. It was checked by technicians from the Oak Ridge Institute of Science and Education, by representatives from the Department of Health Services Radiological Health Branch. And then they did a fourth check, which was above and beyond what is really required by the EPA in that check. Each one of those checks confirmed that the material could be released for unrestricted use. Now, in addition to that, at our landfill, we have monitoring equipment. When I referred earlier to us going above and beyond what the law requires, that's what I was talking about. We have monitoring equipment in place at the gate of the landfill. Every load that comes by there is screened for radioactive content. We began doing this years ago, and we continue today to do that. The radioactive monitoring equipment that we have is calibrated to very precise settings to detect very slight increases.
Sir, let me just simply say to you that... I'm going to wrap it up. Move toward your conclusion that would assist us all. Mr. Burns, we respectfully request that you restrain yourself. Thank you.
Okay, I will. I'll get right to it. We have monitoring detectors. They're very sensitive. We do check everything that comes in there. We are in support of the bill that is being put forward by Senators Romero and Alarcon, and we highly urge the council to get behind it and also support it. Thank you very much.
We thank you for your testimony. And if you have written documents, we'd ask that you submit them for the file.
We will. Thank you very much.
We're going to close the public hearing on the matter. We have four persons wishing to be heard. They are as follows. Mr. Burns, the inevitable, Mr. Burns, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Gruel, and Mr. Garcetti, in that order.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. This is a new day. We have a day when people are recognizing the threat of landfills. Not just for the materials that are toxic, that are toxic. Nuclear waste and so forth, but all waste. And I really, I want to congratulate Senator Romero, who has been a leader in the state senate on this issue. I think she's done a great job in our former colleague. Senator Alarcon, can I pronounce that right?
You're doing nicely.
Who we worked very hard together to close Lopez dump. And hopefully, we have a couple more to go, Bradley and Sunshine, right? Three. At any rate, this is very important. This is important legislation. It should be supported strenuously by our city and by all of us. But it's just the beginning. We have to think of other means of dealing with solid waste. Putting it in the ground is not the answer. The generation that comes will pay for what we've done. The generations of the future will find other means of converting to energy. Or some other means that we're going to put in the ground. We're going to put it in the ground. We want it to be far, far away from neighborhoods and from schools. Such as we have up in Sunshine Canyon and other locations. I want to commend both senators for taking the time to come over here and talk with us. And I want to assure you that this is a new council, members of the senate. This is a council that's prepared to stand up for environmental sensitive issues such as this. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. The chairman, Mr. Padilla. Thank you, Mr. Burns. Colleagues, what's before us today is a motion that I brought in last Friday with one simple request. It asks that our environmental department look into the situation and bring back the information to the council. What do we need to be aware of? What do we need to be concerned about? First and foremost, for the integrity of that privately owned and operated landfill in the city of Los Angeles. But also the impact that it could possibly be having on the residents surrounding it. So I ask for your support on the motion itself. But clearly, from the comments of previous speakers, we may have a Pandora's box on our hands because the concern was brought about from low-level radioactive waste being disposed of at this landfill. Where do the wastes come from? The Santa Susana Pass and the work that's been going on there for years and years and years to the point that one of... Where did the senators go? Another state senator, Sheila Kuehl, is introducing a motion to limit future development in and around that site because of potential long-term environmental concerns. One other, when it comes to this landfill, as Senator Romero mentioned, SB sixteen twenty-three, it's indicative of what's going on in the state of California, the trend when it comes to landfill policy, the trend when it comes to restrictions and protections that are either in place or missing throughout the state of California.
in place or missing throughout the state of California. And nowhere is it exemplified more so than here in Los Angeles, given the size of our city, given the size of our population, given the density in certain communities on both sides of the hill. And so it's important to support that Senate bill, and I want to commend Councilmember Nate Holden as chair of the Environmental Quality Committee in bringing in a resolution to that effect. I think that'll help on two fronts. First of all, providing a notice process. Right now, this waste is being disposed of below the radar. We need to bring in the public's eye, the public's attention through a notice process, and then also take a serious look at what radiation levels are responsible. Right now, it seems to be too high, and allows the operators to operate under the radar. But there's a lot of people, a lot of stakeholders in place right now. The city has a small role to play. The state has a big role to play, a very big role to play. And ultimately, the operators have a role to play, a responsible role to play as well in terms of operating responsibly in communities, throughout California. But I'm proud of this council, and I'm proud of the city for being the first to have a box. I want to support the motion for this. This is an issue that no one will see today. And I look forward to the report from the environmental affairs department. Thank you. And I hope to see you again in the next year.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla.
I want to stand in support of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the surrounding communities, but the communities. And this is an issue in our landfills, whether it be in Sunshine Canyon or Bradley Landfill, that we need to understand the ramifications of what is being put in those landfills. So I stand in support today of the motion before you, not only the one that was introduced by Alex and approved by myself, but the importance of this issue. And I want to compliment Senator Romero for her understanding of the problems that could potentially impact our communities, and how it impacts our communities, not just the[949.22]
We should initiate the argument and ask them to introduce the legislation. But they were too impotent, and that's very good. It means that they are on their job. And I just want to applaud them right here today. Senator Alacan, who was a former constable person during good job. Senator Rivera, we're going to come to you for other legislation as well. And if you live in that district, if you want to meet him, invite, vote for her again. She is good. So I want to say this, President members, that I'm very pleased that we've taken this appropriate, necessary action to encourage the Energy Department to refrain from dumping rock and diamond nuclear waste at the land. And that we're going to have these public hearings to drive the point even home sooner and harder. So as we know, if you're going to have us vote on the motion to support this Romero's legislation, also a Ms. Padilla's motion as well, which I second.
All right. Thank you. That concludes the, uh... That concludes the list of, uh... Uh, Mr., uh... Sergeant, would you, uh, cause Mr. Holden to be in order, please? Uh, Mr. Clerk, proceed.
Item number thirty-seven A is an amendment that, a resolution that Mr. Holden submitted. Did you wish to vote on that separately or take it as a whole matter?
Unless there's, uh, any dissenting point of view, uh, we'll dispose of the entirety of the matter and consider it a friendly amendment.
So item thirty-seven is before you.
Please open the roll. Close the roll. Non-tabulate the vote. Thank you forthwith to the mayor on that item. Thank you very much. We appreciate your attention today on this important item. Next item, please.
Commission appointments. Items numbers five and six are the mayor's appointment of Maple Chang and Richard Brown to the planning commission. There are plan reports that support the recommendation.
All right. Are those persons, uh, in attendance this morning? Would be pleased to see you. Mr. Reyes, would you choose to, um, lead us?
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, just want to share with you that our candidates did show before the committee, um, I just want to thank them for their good work. Participation with the city. Good work with the city. And, uh, I hope you submitted your forms for city ethics. And I appreciate all the work that you're doing. And I'd like to thank you for all the work you're doing. Do you want to add anything or have any comments?
No, they're smarter than you think, Mr. Reyes.
They're much more smarter than you think, Mr. Reyes.
All right. Any other members wishing to be heard at this point or the commissioners? Mr. Padilla.
Thank you. I just want to stand in support of both commissioner nominees, but specifically Maple Chang. We had the opportunity to work together when I was on the Building and Safety Commission. It was a wonderful job. It'd be great. We're lucky to have him. Thank you.
He's a great worker. 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 He's a great worker.
Any other member wishing to be heard with respect to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Thank you very much, and you are hereby confirmed. We should... The request is that that go forthwith to the mayor. That will be the order. Next item, please.
Mr. President, items numbers twenty-one through twenty-three are the mayor's appointments to the Quality and Productivity Commission. And twenty-one is Jan Barton Esperian.
Right.
Twenty-two is Jack Bayless, and twenty-three is Laura Belverde.
If you'd be kind enough to come forward.
Twenty-one is Senator John Barton Osepien. Twenty-two is Mr. Jack Bayless.
Give us your name, rank, and serial number. We'd be delighted.
Twenty-three is Senator Laura Belverde.
Right. Um...
Laura Belverde Sanchez, resident of the Los Feliz area, Councilman LaBanche constituents.
Jack Bayless, resident of West LA, Council District Six. John Barton Osepien, resident of Tulalay, Council District Number Four. All right. Members of the council, we now recognize Mrs. Gruehl, the chair recognizes the council member from the second district.
Good morning. I am standing up in place of Tom LaBanche, a councilmember who unfortunately could not be here. He had a memorial service, just to say how pleased we are that all three of you are willing to serve the city and the Productivity Commission, and how important it is, and to hopefully welcome you to the efforts that we are undertaking to make sure that this city operates more efficiently and your ideas and your experiences to be utilized in that manner. So on behalf of Councilman Tom LaBanche, welcome, and look forward to if any of our other council colleagues have questions for you this morning.
All right. On behalf of the chair of the committee, Gruehl expresses the sentiment of the chair of audits, the government, to the efficiency, uh, and the committee reported before you. The chair now recognizes Mr. Holden.
Hi, Mr. President. Mr. President.
I'd like to ask each of the nominees what they think they might do in order to... You'll be pointing to the Quality and Productivity Commission. What does that mean to you? How do you think you're going to see it anyway?
What do you think it means to you? And how do you think it will help the city?
Quality and productivity are fundamental aspects of services the city provides, and this commission gives us the opportunity to add value to the city's productivity with our experience and in alignment with the leadership here.
With your, with our experience? What about your experience?
My specific experience. Councilman, would you like...
No, no, you're saying your experience.
Yes, sir.
So what qualifies you and what do you intend to do as a member of this?
In my career, I've serviced both government and private sector clients on quality aspects of their work, and I intend to bring that aspect of my experience here.
Well, so...
Last month, I had the opportunity to attend the first Quality and Productivity Commission meeting, and I recognized that there's a diverse group of people on that committee with diverse backgrounds. My personal background is a financial background. I've worked for Price Waterhouse Coopers for the past six years. I'm a CPA, and I'm involved now...
Do you have anything to do with Enron?
Nothing to do with Enron.
Okay, go ahead.
I am a, uh... I work in the business consulting practice at Price Waterhouse Coopers and evaluate ideas and projects on a daily basis, and I think that's exactly what this commission does, and my background will be relevant in that regard.
Good.
Good morning, Councilman Holden. As you know, from my activities being the first Latina woman director for the L.A. Chamber of Fingers back, I've been a manufacturer for thirteen years at Bell Richeriso. I'm also a schoolteacher, but I also add to bring my experience to the commission in a more focused area of stretching the buck, making the dollar go further without too much waste, and to meet all the needs of the diverse needs of the population of our city.
Right. You're looking stretched to the value equivalent by two-hundred million that we need.
It starts with one, so...
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other member that wishes to be heard, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Well, you really did these things.
Close the roll. Non-tabulate the vote. Thank you very much. You are hereby confirmed, and we appreciate your service to the city. You're very welcome, and we will send this forthwith to the mayor. Next item, please.
Item number fourteen is the appointment of city officials. The mayor's appointment of Edward Jerry Greenwald as general manager animal services. There is a public safety committee report recommendation.
All right. Thank you very much. The chair recognizes Ms. Skowsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a very good appointment. I commend the mayor. I think Mr. Greenwald's experience, interestingly, having been previously with this department and then at the CIO's office, so he has a sense of really good fiscal management practices that the mayor chose very, a good person who I think is already jumped in as the interim appointment to make things better, to really work within the systems. It's a big job right now, as we know, not only dealing with the number of animals that are running free throughout the city, our pet overpopulation ordinance, and most particularly recently the approval to build new animal service centers and shelters where we can attempt to deal with these problems. So I recognize strongly, was recommended unanimously by the committee, and I look forward to working with him and suggesting that councilmembers meet with Mr. Greenwald about issues in their district affecting this issue because there are a lot of services available, a lot of opportunities, but we all need to be pitching in and work together with what we're capable of. So good luck, Mr. Greenwald.
Thank you very much, Ms. Skowsky. The chair now recognizes, uh, Mrs. Gruehl, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Holden, in that order, please.
Good morning. I'll be brief, Councilman. I just want to, similarly, I've known Jerry for, gosh, now probably fifteen, twenty years, and your hard work, and I just want to echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Cindy McCann, Ms. Skowsky, about this appointment, and I look forward to working with you on a variety of measures that are important in my second council district, particularly on animal regulation. So thank you so much for being here and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gruehl. Twenty-one seconds, as a matter of fact. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President and colleagues. Mr. Greenwald, just want to congratulate you, and thank you for your good work. Mrs. Gruehl says she's known you for some, for the time she has. Obviously, it's a lot of experience. The comment I'm going to make is not burn into you directly. It's more of an observation in that, um... And I know it's a touchy matter, but I need to put it out there. That is, when I look at the composition of the city, when I look at the gender balance in terms of women and folks who can represent those communities and which make up the city of L.A., I would hope that we can start moving in a direction. We can have more women, more folks who have that, could I say, relationship with these communities that reflect that diversity. And I just want to send that message out there, hoping the mayor's folks are listening. But we need to be able to start looking at how we develop, a change in culture in which our city forces can take to heart and look at our communities' needs in such a way where our quality of our service in our areas that have the greatest level of needs, we can start looking at how we allocate our resources and change that culture so that we can have a bigger bank for our butt, not only in the product, but in the service as well, hopefully generate a better environment, and start picking up a revenue base in our taxes so that we can have a healthier city. So I just needed to lay that out there, and, uh, thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Holden, please. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Greenwald.
Yes, sir.
You currently work, you were working for the city before you got this temporary appointment, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Thirty years.
Thirty years. So you know ends and ends. You also worked in a department, in this department, from nineteen ninety-four to ninety-nine, is that correct?
That's correct.
So you were there when you talked about pug the dog situation, is that correct? Pug the dog, remember the dog that was scammed alive?
Yes, sir.
Were the people really upset about that? I mean, the people who care about animals and take care of animals stray and otherwise? You were around then, weren't you?
Yes, I was, and there were many, many people that were concerned about the situation that this dog was placed in danger.
Yeah, all except the ones in the department. You were assistant general manager at the time.
Uh, I believe we investigated that incident and...
And drug your feet, criticized those responding to the needs of the dogs. And later died.
I believe we found, I believe we found it was actually attacked by a coyote. And...
Never substantiated, never proved, and we put a reward up because we know some individuals were doing this. And you knew that individuals at that time were having rituals with animals. That's more than just a rumor.
That's more than just a rumor. That's more than just a rumor. That's more than just a rumor.
I had you in my office.
Yes, I was there.
There were three or four of us. You guys discussed. That's why you were there. And I got to tell you, the people who take care of animals, they would be upset with you right now. I'm surprised they don't even know you're here trying to get this permanent job. That's why I mean, I'm going to vote for them if they were going to vote that they were here, and that's going to vote against you because your response, because you did respond to that crisis situation related to animals, you're going to be in charge of caring for all these animals and making sure they're protected, stray and otherwise. I think you got to have a revelation. Tell who, what you think you should have done then that you didn't do.
Well, Mr. Holden, actually, at the time, we did spend a great deal of time investigating it. We used our chief veterinarian, outside veterinarians, people from the county, and not just departmental people to investigate this issue.
Right. Another thing, maybe before my time expires, you sent your officers out with badges and knocked the door in and raided the doctor who said he was scammed by a human. You raided it, took all their files. You were aware of that too, aren't you?
Yes, I was.
I did have this. Taken too much, abusing power. Taking advantage of people's rights. You should have never done that. Exercising power, power of the law on your side. You break the door into the doctor. And Mr. Holden...
You broke the door and you ramshocked his office. He was a doctor. 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 All right. Members of the council, before is then, uh, all right, it's five and six, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen. I thought seventeen was called special by Mr. Holden.
I have items numbers seven called special by Councilmember Garcetti, ten by Councilmember Gruehl, and seventeen, nineteen, and twenty by Mr. Holden.
That's correct. So the remaining items are now...
Are eight, nine, eleven through thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen.
Those items are now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Those items are approved.
The ordinance, excuse me, number seven has been called special. Next on the agenda, items numbers twenty-four through thirty-four, items whose public hearings have not been held.
Okay, we have cards on thirty. And thirty-two, thirty-two is called special. And thirty-eight.
We're not to thirty-eight yet.
Okay, not thirty-eight. Hold that. Members of the council, are there any other items that you would like to call special?
Yes. Twenty-nine and thirty-two.
Thirty-two has already been called special because there's a speaker card. We'll add twenty-nine to that. All right, madam, members of the council, those items are before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Those matters are approved.
Item number, uh, twenty-four through, twenty-four and twenty-seven will be held over first and second reading on April sixteenth.
Those matters will be held. Next items.
Next item on the agenda is item number thirty-eight. There is an admitting motion that has been circulated.
All right, we also have a card on thirty-eight, so we can call that special.
Brings you back to item number four, called special, and this member of the public wishes to be heard.
Okay, members of the council, we are on item number four, and we have a speaker card. Let me call forward at this time Randy Greenwald.
Good morning. I'm here to represent the appellant in this matter. The appellant is the property owner of the property located at forty-four oh one West Pico Boulevard. The property owner does not own or operate business at this location, which has been operated by a tenant for the last twenty-five years, and it is my understanding that in the file is a letter from the representative of the business owner accepting the conditions set forth in the determination. The appellant, property owner, objects strenuously to a provision in the determination entitled transferability, which states by its terms that it runs with the land, and also a requirement of recording of a covenant, which is not in the written determination dated December twenty, uh, two thousand and one. In the communication to council from the Plum Committee, they've indicated that there is a prior court hearing, uh, holding in this matter. The prior court holding in, uh, the case, uh, State of Greenwald versus City of L.A., which I appreciate taking notice of, in the amended judgment states, the conditions run with the curto business and does not run with the land. To include either the transferability provision or a covenant is, uh, is an attempt to overrule this prior court holding, and it is, uh, would encumber the property, and it would also attempt to set aside this prior court holding. And the appellant objects strenuously to inclusion of those provisions. The, uh, there are, uh, other alternatives to accommodate the purpose of a covenant, which is to, the zoning ministry indicates to give notice. Uh, the notice, uh, could be given by the responsible party in this matter, being the business owner, uh, and through the process of police fire permits, building and safety, uh, applications, and the ABC. Additionally, as to the parking condition, there is no showing that, uh, there's no evidence of a lack of parking, illegal parking, or even excessive parking or traffic congestion in this area, and there are at least fifty parking spaces, public parking spaces available in the immediate area within the seven hundred and fifty foot. So, uh, in addition to the, uh, objection to the summary of the Plum Committee and its findings, uh, the appellant respectfully requests that the city council take action to grant the appellant's appeal, delete the transferability provision, delete any covenant requirement, and delete parking condition number seven, which includes a lease termination restriction and the sixteen parking space requirement. The lease termination provision, as stated, says it can only be terminated if the operator goes out of business or does not pay. And in common commercial leases, there are other provisions which are commonly agreed to, which might make a lease provision acceptable, which are not included. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Um, this is a planning matter. I don't know, Mr. Reyes, if you would like to speak or have the planning staff come forward and present the, uh, case. Okay, if we could ask the zoning administrator to come forward. Yes, the chair recognizes Councilmember Reyes.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to state that we did hear this in Plum Committee. We support the denial of these appeals. It's one of those cases in which, uh, if this entity would have been a good neighbor, we wouldn't have the issues that we have here before today. But I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Green, if we can just give us a succinct, short, uh, presentation on your findings.
Good morning, council members. Daniel Green, zoning administrator. Uh, in this particular case, the police did a, an inspection of the property and found a slot machine, uh, in operating condition in the bar with money in the slot machine. They also found that the required security guard was not on duty when they inspected the property. The, um, issue of the covenant is, uh, fairly straightforward. This is to put on constructive notice any potential buyer of the site or, uh, any potential S.C. that there have been, uh, conditions imposed on the site, and we feel that that's in everybody's interest. Uh, there's been no showing that the parking cannot be obtained. In fact, that was a condition that was imposed, uh, several years ago and has not been complied with. And in this particular case, the applicant did not file the required, uh, plan approval to get us here, so, um, I would urge you to follow the committee's report. The transferability also has been deleted.
Excuse me, okay, so the issue, the issue relative to transferability has been deleted, and, um, the parking...
And the covenant would clearly indicate that the conditions are on the business and do not run with the ownership of the property.
Okay, um...
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Reyes?
I just want to emphasize that in accordance of all these findings, and that many of our districts, we have nuisance properties in which the, uh, folks who, to go to these venues, when they leave, they litter, they are obstruction to quality of life. Uh, we had citizens who took time out of their work schedule to attend this hearing and basically articulate just how bad the imposition is on their peace of mind, what's happening to their properties. So I just want to support, uh, again, the zoning administrator, and we should be sustaining the quality of life, and these are the kinds of actions we should be taking to ensure, uh, peace of mind for our neighborhoods that are already heavily taxed with other issues.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes Councilmember Brunson.
Yes, I think the Chair of the Planning Committee has made the case, but I just want to go one step further. This is a very egregious case. I think that when I originally authored the revocation bill a number of years ago, there was one thing I forgot to do, and I, you know, it's never too late. There is a cost to the city of dealing with these types of operations, that we have to impose regulations, we have to have public hearings, there is a cost. And I'm going to bring in a motion that's going to call for an ordinance for us to recover the costs in cases where we have to take this type of action. And if they don't pay the cost, then we will leave the property. So, just prepare yourself, that motion's coming. And I would advise you, sir, as a representative, to make sure that the owner of the property, make sure that he heed the warnings that have been given in the conditions, because otherwise you can find yourself in that position.
Thank you. We now have before us the Planning and Land Use Management Committee report, which is recommending denial of the two appeals with the deletion as recommended by the C.A. that was already taken care of. I'm sorry, it's me, Councilmember Holden.
Madam President, members, this matter was before, was before to be considered, Mr. Reyes, as they come to his committee, which we've done due diligence, Mr. Burman, Brunson? My name is Jones, I'm sorry. So, but we have someone here from LAPD, police captains, two of them, who will be willing to justify necessarily, but I think we, Mr. Reyes and all have heard a lot on this matter, enough. And I think, Madam President, we move the committee's report, thus to deny an appeal and to support the administrative finding. Mr. Brunson, it's all done legally, in open session, and we'll stand up in court.
All right, we now have the recommendation of the committee before us. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item number seven, called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti called that special, but I believe this was to request a continuance, which is in order, so we would request a continuance for four months, one hundred and twenty days. That will be the action.
Trying to figure out the date, that would be about six-ten, I believe.
Okay. Next item?
Item number ten, called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Councilmember Gruel, chair.
Good morning. This is an item that was before Housing Committee on Friday, and in, I guess, between Friday and today, the department, and I think their hopefully representative or CRA, indicated that there is a resolution required for the TFR hearing and the importance of this item. So, this is an amendment, and Gail can tell me if I'm doing this correctly on my first moment, but it is an amendment to the committee action that was taken on Friday to pass this resolution in addition to the other items in that committee report. That's correct. So, I would ask the council to approve this motion.
You did well. Okay, we have before us item ten with the amendment that is on the desk. There are no other speakers, the matter's before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved. Thank you.
Item number seventeen, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Chair recognizes Mr. Holden on item seventeen.
Madam President, members, Madam President, Mr. Padilla, I'm sure this came out of your committee and you also. It came out of your committee, maybe you can explain to us, Mr. Padilla, where are you? City Attorney, maybe you can tell us what this really represents.
We also have the CLA before us, who normally does the work.
CLA, front and center.
AB eighteen sixty-eight is a bill that we have a motion to, a resolution to support. And what this would do is allow, addresses the problem of the change of ownership in property in nuisance abatement cases, where there is a problem of an injunction going against one owner, and then they make a change of ownership, and then the local attorneys have to go back and reestablish that injunction against the new owners. This would put it on the record that the injunction sticks, and it is a fair notice to any subsequent buyers that they are under a mandate to clean up the property. In addition, this proposes to change, to put into statute that a judge has the authority in egregious cases to require the landlord to live in the property if there's been egregious examples of nuisance and deterioration of the property.
The judge can order that the property owner live in the property right now, is that correct?
Pardon me?
The judge can make that order?
Yes.
Today without this legislation, yes and no?
Yes.
Well, then, what are we talking about? In this?
It's the injunction part that's more relevant. The other one is making it statutory so that the judge can always see that he can do it. It's, you know, it's, just makes it a little easier.
You just give the judge the authority if he chooses to do so?
Yes, sir.
I mean, uniform enforcement of the law or the penalties, I mean, it's going to change from courtroom to courtroom.
Well, okay, well.
In any case, if it's already something the judge can do, by what authority does the judge require landlords to live in the property today when it's deficient in any way? What's on the books? Do you know anything?
The judge has the power already under equity, you know, the court has equitable powers to order whatever means and necessary to abate the nuisance. This just puts it in there along with several other items that are already in there, such as fencing, lighting. It just brings that to the attention of the court and indicates a legislative intent that that is something that the legislature feels is something that the court should perhaps consider.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the recommendation before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That matter is approved.
Item number nineteen, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden?
Senor Holden.
Yeah, item nineteen.
Oh, yeah, Ms. Kosh, would you just go with that one? There's a different problem here. Thank you.
Mr. Kosh, want to give us a presentation on the matter?
Legislation sponsored by the City Attorney's Office to essentially strengthen existing statutes on the confiscation and enforcement procedures of firearms in the state of California under domestic violence prohibitions.
I'm sorry, honey.
Hello, I'm Alana Bowman with Los Angeles City Attorney's Office, who are the sponsor of this legislation, asking support by the City Council.
Right, I understand that time capped here for ten years. They just gave it to me where if you've been convicted of domestic violence ten years prior to, then you cannot possess a firearm, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there a time, is it, I just got it in my hand this minute.
That, the reference you're making to is existing law. It's been in statute, I believe, ten years.
All right, now, what are you trying to change it to?
We're not changing a thing. We're simply putting notice in the penal code section of that provision, so that when defendants plead to a domestic violence charge, they're put on notice that that is the ten-year prohibition.
All right, is this retroactive?
No.
Is it not retroactive? What if an example of someone was convicted of domestic violence nine years ago? Would they have to go turn their weapon in? If they had one?
If, if they were convicted, if they were convicted nine years ago, ten years ago, yes, the current state of the law is that they are prohibited as of today.
Say if someone come to California, was convicted in another state five years ago, and five years ago, this law does not apply, and they have a weapon, and have legal authority, authorization to bring it to Cali, State of California, and they're in the State of California, and they've had this conviction, how are they notified that they're in violation of the law?
Through the statute and through federal.
They don't read the statute.
And through federal law, under the Federal Violence Against Women Act, it's also a prohibition.
So, this legislation is consistent with the federal act as well?
It is, exactly.
So, therefore, even if the state in which they're coming from does not have a law which is similar to the one we have here?
Exactly that.
This is just, exactly?
The federal, under the Federal Violence Against Women Act and the Federal Brady Firearms Act, both these provisions apply to convictions under domestic violence.
So, they have to turn their weapon, they shouldn't have a weapon if they were convicted of domestic violence.
That's right, exactly that.
No matter what part of the United States they're in.
I'm sorry?
No matter what state they're in.
That's right.
They should not have a weapon.
That's right.
Right, so, so this is current law, then, what we're talking about?
Exactly that.
Then what are we talking about if it's current law?
What we're simply doing is putting a notice in the statute that when a defendant pleads guilty, that they're aware of what the consequences of the guilty plea would be.
Oh, all right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
That matter, as recommended by the Rules, Elections, and Governmental Relations Committee, recommending support for the bill is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That matter is approved.
Item number twenty, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Madam President, members, Ms. Kosh.
You're going to hold my time, what do you think of your report? Thank you.
Yes, this is a recommendation to support AB twenty-two oh five by some of the courts pursuant to resolution by Councilmember Padilla and vice. This would increase the penalty for the distribution of black market cigarettes. Currently, the penalty of fine is one hundred dollars, is doubled to two hundred. The increase would go to the local government, multi-agency task forces to track down black market cigarette activities.
So, it's going to raise the fines from a hundred dollars to two hundred dollars for black market cigarettes, is that correct?
Yes.
Is that considered a felony or misdemeanor or what? Misdemeanor?
This is Assistant City Attorney Supran, considered a misdemeanor in terms of the penalty.
Madam President, members, when I was in the city, we dealt with misdemeanor crimes with this white collar. And at that time, the fines were about five, six hundred dollars. And it did nothing for us to prevent people from, white collar crimes from being committed to the industry, remember? And I think we changed that at that time to twenty-five hundred dollars. And it has not been increased since I left, I don't think. So, that twenty-five hundred dollars went into books since nineteen seventy-six, I believe. And here, this is essentially white collar crime and misdemeanor and other felony. And if you're going to raise it to two hundred dollars, it's double the purpose of having some money to police this black market, we ought to encourage the legislation to increase it more than that, and maybe give some of the money back to the local government for education, training for our young people, like we did when we won the lawsuit. I would suggest that if they know they're violating the law, one or two of the laws, like to keep it from doing, that they'll pay that out of profits, which is substantial. We should be asking, asking for a fine, they're white, don't be saying nothing.
According to this state board of equalization, it is estimated that it could generate revenues one point seven million dollars per year in terms of increase penalty.
It'll make it twice that much or three times that much, you have more money coming in.
We also have, we also have to keep in mind that it's per two hundred cigarettes, so the fine increase actually can be much more than that if you're talking about cartons or box loads of cigarettes.
Twenty cigarettes?
Two hundred cigarettes.
I didn't like marketing two hundred cigarettes, they should bring them into the country.
The fine originally was only twenty-five dollars when it was first announced.
What kind of people are they talking about? Why cigarettes? Like in Korea or someplace? And bring them here and they don't expose them, is that what you're talking about?
They can, they kind of in various sources throughout the world in terms of being untaxed and unmarked.
Well, what about if it's for their own use, you're supposed to smoke the cigarettes?
It's still illegal.
I understand that, but for their, for their own use, I mean, how are you going to buy a smoker a couple of cigarettes? White collar.
There's a stamp that goes on it, and eighty-seven cents worth of tax goes on every pack of cigarettes to fund a variety of healthcare issues.
And the federal government would nail you for that.
It's a, it's a state task, it's three component parts of it.
I really want to nail people who are really in the market, who visit the black market cigarettes, high-fried, but not, if you're talking about your own use. One card of cigarettes, we've raised it to be very own use, and I don't smoke. But that's beside the point, is that I think that, all right, go with a hundred dollars.
Thank you. No one else requesting to speak, so this matter is recommended is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That matter is approved.
Item number twenty-nine, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item twenty-nine.
Madam President, members, item twenty-nine, something to record.
Sir, members of staff here on item twenty-nine. Let's go forward. Do we have a staff presentation?
Before you is a recommendation to seek legislation at the federal level pursuant to resolution by Councilmember Padilla over the way in which funds were distributed competitively for the Renewal Community Act, which was a one-time effort. We were able to get one grant, there were many other deserving areas of the city, and they failed to qualify because of the very stringent requirements in the federal act. This resolution is in response to that, and while recognizing that the renewal community was a one-time effort, it's directed at any of the federal programs, primarily those that are administered by HUD, but any other programs too, wherein this stringent method of evaluating the grand requests by cities could be made a little more flexible. The intent is to try and have more flexibility so that more areas of the community that are in our needs, that is poverty, unemployment, will be able to qualify for this.
Madam President, members, I, this is the program that Mr. Nandez has worked on for a number of years, he's very familiar with it. We, the city can drive a great amount of the fine, I'm asking the table. I think far more about housing and public money, almost as much. So, Mr. Nandez, would you tell us what we need to know and what you do every day?
Yeah, Councilman Holden, and I think that you're looking at Councilmember Gruel, who worked for HUD, was important. Back in nineteen ninety-two, we had the opportunity to work on an Department of Duty application. And what we found out in looking at our property statistics in the city is that we had a hundred miles of qualified areas. In those hundred miles, basically, we were able to represent almost two hundred thousand people, who basically were in each application. We as a city were able to maximize five applications at two hundred thousand people, twenty square miles. In doing that, there was a question as to whether we were competitive, because they were looking at us like, how could you have, and we're looking at them, how could you have five applications? And they all qualify. They all met the guidelines. We were able to do that because one of the requirements that was lifted that existed before was contiguous zones. You see, out of Council District Seven, there was two census tracts that could have qualified. And in Council District Six, I remember there was another two census tracts in the Marvesta area. But in the inner city, you could have tremendous poverty and had a tremendous area. And so, the question becomes, what makes our applications competitive? Because when Washington is looking at applications from the midwest, they're looking at applications from the south, and they only allocate only twenty-five grants, twenty-five nationwide grants. When you pass this proposal, you need to understand, because we're also going to make communities in California more competitive. We're going to make other areas more competitive for their grants. Because they don't have the same kind of flexibility. Washington has not passed legislation that allows basically one area to be accepted. And so, it's something you have to think about. There's no question in my mind that a child growing up in poverty census tract is a disaster. And we as a city tried very hard to be as exclusionary as possible, we did that with the culprits, and I think that's why Councilman Padilla had introduced this motion, because this community believed we're being excluded from that community, because the guy is excluding these cross-opinational. And so, I think we're looking for some flexibility. I just wanted everybody to have a clear understanding of what that means. When you talk about a problem like lawsuits, that's a city with a large area that basically currently exists in so many cities.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nandez. I got to say that in the first district, we're the need for the greatest, first eight and nine, ten, fourteen, Mr. Nandez has been very successful. I went to a lot of sites about eight years ago, and I saw so many projects on the board there. So, in any case, thanks for explanation. I think we asked for a vote, Mr. Padilla. Thank you.
I have a quick question, so don't leave the table yet, I'm sorry. I'm very pleased to see this motion was forced, and wanted to stand up and comment and have a couple of questions. One is, I do recall when I worked for Mike, one of the legislation that I mentioned was understanding that Los Angeles is diverse, and only population, but geography, that Los Angeles is unique in different ways, and Washington DC, they know quite a bit of how Los Angeles worked, and that was one of my tasks, being a Southern California representative for HUD. But under the direction of the mayor, the city representative of HUD, with the talde of valley, we were como corredores and muy ados en que trabajamos para que ellos se dieran cuenta de cómo funcionaba Los Angeles, pero por qué los otros sí contribuían para esas zonas de crecimiento y recibir bonos. One is, it does refer both to regulations and legislation. That's very critical to understand that oftentimes departments are hamstrung because the legislation is so specific and does not allow for that flexibility or understanding. And again, Los Angeles is extraordinarily unique in our numbers of people in the poverty areas that are throughout the city. Secondly, to ensure that an amendment would require an amendment is similarly on a state level, to ensure there's a lot of flexibility. And we know that there's a lot of flexibility for those counties. And so these things, as we know, we're not as prevalent in the state of California as the state of California. But we must assure that we can amend that. I'd like to hear your opinion on this. Relative to statutory versus regulatory grounds, the waivers are specifically for, the waivers are specifically for regulatory. The flexibility is sometimes below the law. When the laws are presented, others are also under the law. And we don't have to ask exclusions when there are regulations. We can ask exceptions if this is permitted. In this case, we don't ask exclusions. We can ask for more flexibility with these solitudes for those. Relative to, to, to individuals, we're trying to, what we're doing is that we create groups interesting, and then come up with a series of different applications. And we'll sit down, look at the scoring, and come back to committee and council with the most competitive of our, you know, after our analysis, with the most competitive of the grants, and have council decide, so that we will take all that into consideration when we come before council committee and council. Because I definitely obviously want to make sure that the valley has an opportunity to apply for some of these grants and again, allow that flexibility so the cities are not hamstrung. The question I have though is, not only on the waivers, but does this also instruct our lobbyists in Washington DC to ensure to follow legislation that is originally setting up these programs similarly make sure that there is flexibility and takes into consideration that in nature Los Angeles? Yes, I think that we've already begun the process, and we're having conversations and we're trying to put together a legislature to have that ability. Because I think we do, again, I know it is a cumbersome process on the local level to sometimes analyze each of those items that is coming forward. But we can see from what I think this was an article that was presented last August or September, that it indicated we were not eligible. It is critically important for us to do that. And I simply want to offer any of my help I can and working with the Department of Housing and Urban Development that is more forward since I spent time there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to echo a couple of things that Councilmember Drew mentioned. And I think when we look at how some of this has played out in past years and think of my own district, there are huge pockets of poverty, as you know, in Hollywood that have never been able to be connected because of the issue of contiguous zones. And I think that is a critical thing to underscore. And perhaps we can speak with HUD about developing something about if you have areas that are not contiguous but are within a mile from other areas that it could go, that we could skip a census tract. I know that for the first time thirteen district was included in the community that went through. In other years, we couldn't be. In other years, in San Pedro, it kind of is this shuffled game. When we look at the density of the city, I think it's critical for us to force the federal government to begin to think about this in different ways. Because poverty, if you have an area that's very poor, my district by per capita income is the third poorest in the city after the first nine, you have basically, you could have a nice development somewhere in the middle or something that's slightly richer in the middle that cuts off poverty areas from each other. We know that it really surrounds a given neighborhood or community. And I think it's critical for the federal government to understand that. For us to put something on the table for them to think creatively about that. I don't know if it would be, if that would work for a mile or a couple of miles, or certainly just within one minute or jurisdiction is another thing to offer. And look forward to them as a possibility. And that's critical for us to make sure that sort of development gets everywhere each time, because I think that's the intent of the federal law. Thanks.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmembers and colleagues. This is one of those examples that as one city, we have many more delegates, much more representation, much more power at the Hill. We talk about how we address the issues of priorities. Because Los Angeles is so unique. And so when these programs bring frame, they don't frame it with Los Angeles in mind. We are an anomaly in how we look at these regulations, how we fit into those issues. Again, I need to pronounce, I need to amplify those viewers who are listening, that this is one example of how, with our congressmen, our senators, those folks who represent us at the state and federal level have a greater power as one city, one big city. And how we are positioned, but we can worry because of charter reform with the mayor's office, because they do manage now our lobbyists in Washington DC. So how we coordinate with our mayor's office, our council committees, to somehow strategize and how we bring these folks to the table. I can share with you when I was working with then-Councilman Hernandez, how we literally had to play hardball. We had to talk about what is the message we're sending to the voter base here in Los Angeles? Are we addressing these issues of need? And how we were able to define these zones of need? And how they're spreading out throughout the city? And yes, believe it or not, even in the valley, you do have poverty rising. You do have people who are trying to survive, and they do need the support. So again, I'll just need to amplify that. As one city, we have a stronger voice, a louder voice, a clearer voice, how we address this diversity. Thank you.
Mr. Zine. Mr. Zine, are you still with us? There he comes. Yes, Mr. President, I moved the previous question. Well, I'm going to hold it back. What are we on? Sorry. The item regarding renewal communities in the HUD guidelines. Rules, elections, and intergovernmental elections committee has reported for us. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were on thirty-eight. Move previous question. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Dea. You are the final speaker. Thank you, Mr. Rudy Thomas. You are the final speaker. This concludes discussion on item number twenty-nine. Several members wishing to be recognized. Mr. Clerk, we have the committee report before us. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number thirty, called special, and as much as a member of the public wishes to be heard. Item number thirty now before us. Council calls forward, Mr. Jim McQuiston.
Good afternoon, Jim McQuiston. East Hollywood Community Association. I'm glad that this is moving forward. We have now a system of neighborhood councils. Unfortunately, the charter says one thing, and our ordinances have kind of changed it around, so that we have a lot more hoops for these people to jump through now. One of them is a new election after they're certified. That wasn't in the charter, so that must be a city originated movement, and it costs these people a lot of money. And so I think it's only right that the city would support the cost of these extra elections and things. So I'm very, very pleased that the Education and Neighborhoods Committee has brought this forward to the council, and I expect that you all will agree with me that this is the right to do.
Thank you, Jim. This concludes public comment on item number thirty. Members wishing to be recognized, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is critical for the success. I was just speaking with Councilman Burtonson, and I know that he's of another opinion that we might be able to do this stuff for free. But I think where there's been a lot of contentiousness, especially in certain neighborhoods, ensuring that these elections are free and fair is going to be critical. And if we are going to do more than just talk about devolving power to our neighborhoods, but actually do this, I know a number of leaders of neighborhood councils throughout the city who have said, we simply cannot. We've spent already two years trying to organize these things to pay out of our pocket. It's critical that our elections, which actually get the neighborhood councils up and running, can go through, and that the resources are there for it. I hope that we will all support this today, because in order for that to happen, we've already got a backlog of neighborhood councils that are waiting to do this. And I think that we should look down the line at how we want to administer these elections as well. If we want to empower these neighborhood councils into the budget process, as we've spoken about, if we want to empower neighborhood councils into having some say over what happens in their specific neighborhoods with which streets get paved and which trees get trimmed, we also have to make sure that the process and the entities themselves are brought into the city. So maybe down the line, this is something that we want to look at the city clerk or other entities helping out and being involved in. So we don't just give the money out there, but we also make sure that the process is just as democratic as we hold elections for this body too.
Mr. Burton.
Yes, members of the council, I'm not an opponent of neighborhood councils. In fact, we have been the ones in the city. It has cost the city an amazing amount of money for my councils. Zero dollars. Because all of them ran with the assistance of our office. There was no mail cost to them. There was no election cost to them. And I think we're making a terrible mistake if we politicize these community councils by financing elections. Next thing you know, they'll have the Ethics Commission involved in all kinds of forms. And what you will do is discourage people who really care about the community from being involved. This is a, this is a process that involves people who care about their community. And if they care about their community, they're willing to invest their time. And if necessary, a small amount of money. I don't know that anybody's ever invested money in our councils, other than, other than our time. And we have people sitting out here who served for twenty-three years on my councils from the North Hills area, of the North Hills. So I think it's a mistake to do that. I think that these councils are capable of operating with the assistance of minimal staff from the city. We now have every council. But essentially, all that requires is the cooperation of any one of your offices. All of you could have done this. You could have had the input as to where your streets need to be paved, what needs to be done with police fire. Every single planning case in our district goes before a planning committee that's comprised of one of our neighborhood councils, and they make recommendations. So I can't, without us looking at a two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar deficit this year's budget, I have difficulty in spending any more money for something that I don't think is necessary. Now, I support the councils, but I'm not going to support putting money into elections that take place in these councils throughout the city.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Being a former elected charter commissioner along with two of my colleagues that currently serve on the council, we designed this to help communities. And one of the problems that is emerging is once they're certified, and I have two certified in the third district, is now they're looking for the fifty thousand that's been promised for their operating. And that fifty thousand dollars isn't coming through, as it was promised. There's a lot of frustration in addition to what Councilmember Burtonson referred to, the ethics code and the ethics requirements and the documents they now file. It's becoming a very legal cumbersome process. In addition to that, we now have border wars where the neighborhood councils are fighting with other neighborhood councils over the boundaries. So it's becoming a very complicated process, which is creating a lot of frustration in many communities. I know in my district, there are Hatfield and McCoy campaigns going on, and the Mason-Dixon line boundaries going on, and it's a real problem. It was designed to bring communities together and give them the identity and to merge their philosophies and help with the beautification. I know that Councilman Burtonson and Councilman Rudy Thomas have wonderful programs in the twelfth district and the eighth district. They've been working very, very well for many, many years. The problem that I see with this, and I do support neighborhood councils, the concept was wonderful. The problem, the practical approach is not working. And as we see, the neighborhood councils that have already been certified, and they're waiting for the funding, which isn't there, it has not been appropriated, and if we have a deficit, where's that money going to come from? So now we have more empty promises delivered. So it's a, it's a situation I see, Mr. Greg Nelson here, who's the general manager of that department. And I know that you inherited a major problem when you took over that position. And I know your knowledge and experience and dedication to that. But the problem is, we're giving promises to communities, and we're not delivering on what we promised. Those that have been certified have not received the funding, and there's a lot of frustration with that, in addition to the other problems that I've discussed. So this is a broader focus, and just fifty thousand dollars, they can do elections. This has to be comprehensive, and I don't know where we go with it, but we've got something to address before it gets even further down the line. And I made a recommendation that maybe we stop any further processing, any further modification, any further certification for moratorium until we can sort this mess out, because it's becoming messier and messier and more complicated, and the community people who are involved are getting very frustrated with the process.
Mr. Holden. Previous question has been moved. We do have two members waiting in the queue. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the previous question. Two people do. Previous question has been called, requires a vote. Please open the roll on the previous question. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Does not pass. Mr. Holden, so on your time, if not, I'll call the next speaker. Ms. Gruel.
I'll be brief, I promise, Councilmember Holden. I'm standing up in support of this motion today because in each of our council districts, and I know I have anywhere from five to ten neighborhood councils that are starting their formation, and the frustration they have is that there is no support, that we say to them, we want to listen to them, we want to have them be part of the city system, and yet we are not providing any kind of support to them. And I think that they're struggling along each day, trying to provide us with resources. And I think as Councilman Burtonson and Councilman Zine said, they have, you know, it is an important part of this, and that if you're a good council member, you've had the input on streets and trees and so forth. What we found is that people haven't had a process, and unless they knew us or had a relationship with us, they didn't have the opportunity to express in a forum in which they had their neighbors participating. So the neighborhood councils in my district are critically important to the way in which I'm going to operate and have them participate in decision-making. So I just wanted to stand up in support of the motion.
Ms. Ms. Causel.
I do rise in support of the motion. It is difficult, and there are going to be issues, and there's going to be disputes. But we have, we are creating a process, and that process, I don't think we can expect it's going to be smooth. We're letting people participate in a different way for the first time ever. And that conversation is going to grow. So there's going to be growing pains, and we alone with our neighborhoods are going to have to deal with that. But we did make a commitment when we set this process forward through these issues with certification, with election, a commitment of funding to help support that. For the most part, our neighborhood groups are participating in large measure out of pocket. And these funds are not only going to be for electorities, they're actually going to be starting to the community and with the community, according to the community, the things they want to see done, providing those services to enhance after that's something extra. And I think that this is going to be a system that, that needs to grow, needs to have a clear and efficient source of funding. But this motion at age is saying we have to provide it because, and in fact, the reason we're providing it now is we've been more successful than we thought. The Department of Neighborhood Empowerment really thought that maybe in the end of the year, they'd have ten neighborhood councils certified. We're not in the end of the year, and they already have twenty. And they have almost every neighborhood in the city beginning to organize, beginning to talk, beginning to discuss. And it's a very, very big job. It's an exciting job, and I think we should applaud both that department and Neighborhood Empowerment, as well as our communities, who are taking this seriously, hearing what the council said, and said, we are going to do what you asked. We are going to form, we are going to participate, we are going to be part of this city governing process. And I think that we can't rig now, we can't slow down. We've got to learn with our communities, go forward, but let's put the funding there that we said would be there and work with them to help smooth the bumpy edges and move forward. And I think years from now, we'll be looking back at this moment. It's very, very momentous. We will learn together, we will make changes and modify it as we need to along the way. But I think we've already gotten started, and we should just keep the momentum up.
Mr. Reyes.
Councilmember, I just rise to say I support this amendment. I'll keep it brief and just say that we need to fulfill our commitments. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
I'll try to keep it just as brief. I would just, with all due respect, Councilmember Burtonson, this is stuff that we already have earmarked, and I think that we do have to fulfill that commitment. It's not new money. The fifty thousand for elections had already been earmarked. Is that correct, Mr. Nelson? That's what's in the motion. It had already been earmarked that this was going to be part of the system, so we passed this through. I think we have to live up to that promise. And I think you said it, and it's great that you have always, out of your council budget, helped out these.
helped out these groups. I've been doing it in my areas with my own budget as well. No, $50,000 total. So I think that at this point, we should move forward with doing it. It's a commitment that's out there, and we've been all hanging out of our pockets as well in the council district offices. I'm sure we'll continue to help out those neighborhood councils, but this is just fulfilling that promise.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Any other members wishing to be recognized? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number thirty-two, called special. By Mr. Burnson, there's also cards on this matter.
Let's take our public speakers first. The council calls forward at this time Mr. Jim McQuiston, to be followed by Mr. Wade Hunter.
Mr. President, the point of order. Did we take ten votes to hear this matter yet?
No, we have not. Are you asking for a vote to consider this?
Mr. Chairman, before you want to just explanation to Mr. Burnson, Mr. Burnson, if this were to go to committee, I bring it back posthese with all the discussion that it needs. All right, if we act on it, then you can act on it and still refer the matter of the result, the findings to the committee.
Mr. Burnson.
This is a critical matter. We have a window.
All right, sit down. We'll hear it, and then I'll tell you why I'm raising the issue, Mr. Burnson.
Mr. McQuiston.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. This matter is not in my district, but I am definitely affected by it, because just as Mr. Reyes has said, this affects everybody in the whole area. But before I start, I want to say, please do not call the mess at the San Francisco Facility a rocket dine mess. It was an Atomix International mess. I used to have an office up there at that time, and I know we were all horrified at Atomix International, which was a separate division of North American Aviation. Yes, I did want to mention that, though. Now, as far as this matter is concerned, this is a matter that affects all neighborhood councils, and it also affects our secession movements, because all of the environmental impact reports now say they all have to find a place to dispose of their waste. So that means that we're all in this together, and we're not picking on a valley, we're not picking on the harbor, we're not picking on Hollywood. And I believe that the only rational way of doing this is just exactly what the proposal says, namely, we have to really give it a little more thought and depth. We have to investigate this matter. We have to hold up the matter as far as Sunshine Canyon is concerned.
Mr. Wade Hunter.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I ask that you support this motion and direct sanitation to prepare a comprehensive review of the alternatives to Sunshine Canyon. And just in case everybody's forgotten, I'd like to let you know how landfill started and where it's ended today, because I think it's very important. In 1956, it started as a legal dump. In 1966, the city legalized it, and it was a forty-acre site taking only quote unwrapped, oh, sorry, wrapped garbage. By 1991, when it closed, it had taken in 25 million tons of trash. And at that time, BFI proposed a three-phase plan. Phase one was a county landfill of 17 million tons. Phase two is an expansion back into the city, which you had been considering, and this would make it one of the largest landfills in the United States. Phase three, which nobody talks about but has never gone away, is back into the county again for a total of 215 million tons of trash, the world's largest. And all of this, next to a large urban population, next to all of LA's water, in one of the most seismicly active areas and one of the windiest passes in all of Southern California. Before I close, I've been asked to address just two things. Mr. Pacheco's statement of the $60 a month fee in the low twenties is more typical for most cities in the United States, and the county is planning to use fee leveling or price leveling. But I think it would be appropriate for all of us to wait for sanitation's report so we would all know what the true numbers were. The other thing, again, on a personal note, we were, with item thirty-seven, and we were told by a person who works at Sunshine that in the past, the radiation detectors were going off so often that they turned them off. So we too look forward to a report on radiation. So in closing, there definitely is a need to take action now, as there is only a short window of opportunity. So we urge you to approve this motion today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment period for item number thirty-two. Members wishing to be recognized, beginning with Mr. Garcetti. Or Mr. Burnson, excuse me. Mr. Burnson first.
Members of the council, this is a very important issue to all of us, not just the 12th district, but it affects the entire city, and it affects the future of our city, affects future generations. You've all heard, I think Mr. Hunter described it very, very clearly, the impact, location, and so forth. We have an opportunity now to take another look at this. We have an opportunity to do the right thing. This measure barely passed the old city council. This is a new city council with a different look towards environment and health issues. And we need to act now. We need to ask, we need to look at other options, which might be, if necessary, long-haul to areas where there are not population centers. That's one possibility. There are possibilities such as energy conversion and whatever may be available. And I think that it's urgent that we act now. I ask, Mr. Holden, please do not try to hijack this and send it to committee, because it needs to be acted on. The mayor has asked us to do so. I'm asking you to do so. I just want to add one other thing. I would ask, and I'll bring in a separate motion tomorrow, that will create a citizens' advisory group that looks, oversight group, that looks at the results that are brought back by the sanitation department, because I think the sanitation department has had an opportunity in the past to do something else, and they did not choose to do so because it was easier to just stick it in neighborhoods like Granada Hills. So the composition, I think Mr. Padilla and I both are correctly below. We share the dump, even though it's slightly in my district. We're going to make some appointments, we'll ask the mayor, we want to get some people involved in that monitoring process that includes geologists, people dealing with water allergy, also from the Health Department, medical oncologists that deal with diseases of cancer that may be caused by some of the impact of things that are put into the water supply directly below it and into the food chain. So I'll bring that in tomorrow, but today, we need to move forward with this and ask that this study be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Burnson. I rise in support of this move today. I think that it's also a great opportunity for us to look at what we do with waste and constantly how we can improve that, I think. If you look at other cities, I've just recently been looking at a city in Sweden that not only recycles all of its paper and plastic and metal containers, but also has all organic material from, you know, our kitchens and stuff like that replaced in a place that then actually heats the entire town center and drives all the buses that drive around on methane in the town center. We look at apartments in the city and the way that we don't have apartments recycling. I think we really should take this as an opportunity as well to look at how we can go further. And the Bureau of Sanitation has done a very good job with a lot of recycling and what we do with our green, organic matter, but I think it's a real opportunity. But I do support Councilmember Burnson today in moving forward, at least with the study, and seeing what we can do to make sure that the impact on folks that live in this one single city can be mitigated as well as possible.
Mr. Holden.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Garcetti. It's one single city for none. Let me say, I remember, Mr. Burnson, this Sunshine Canyon, don't we have an agreement with the county on this? Didn't we go through a long discussion about Sunshine Canyon before and having all the monitoring devices up there, and the neighbors were complaining about what was wrong with that dump site, landfill site? And they have not been in compliance, BFI, am I right? Do you know that? They're not in compliance, so they're not understanding the motion here, when it says that they've been denied the expansion of the landfill. That's number one. The city, they've been denied, been rejected. Now, you're saying they've been rejected because the application was not properly filled out, and they got a lot of loyalty, experience, they know how to do that. So been rejected. You say it's temporary, something they might have to revisit. And I'm saying to you that we got to haul the content of this. I told you before, we can expand in the city. The agreement should have been, they should expand in the county first. They got unused land out there, not in the city. That's part of the agreement that, here, once again, I told you, so you worked that one out, you cut the deal, now you're here saying don't expand in the city's portion of it, and you're just further impacting the residents in that area, the children and the families and residential properties with potential contamination. Here's the dump city doing it all over again, when it advised not to even cut the deal with the county in the first place. If you're going to have expansion, you should have had expansion in the county area. But they didn't do that. Now you're talking about expansion in the city, and then you say here in your moving clause, talked about sanitation department, be directed to prepare a comprehensive review of alternative, including new technology? What about the old technologies for the department place to reopening of the Sunshine Canyon? I mean, you cannot reopen the expansion of the Sunshine Canyon, but your motion says reopening. And there's some flaws in here, and that's why I wanted to bring the committee. Here's what I would suggest, that they go ahead and come up with a new technology, the alternative sites, alternatives for reopening or expansion or whatever the case may be, and do it within sixty days, report their recommendation to file it into my committee before it comes to the council. And if we have to be, they'll get beat up there, you know that. And at the same time, they'll get some results. Yes, let's move on it today, but let's have them have a report back within sixty days. And that report should be, in the interim, should come to the committee. July 2nd. Okay, the study and the results of the study will come to the committee, then come to council. Don't you want to put a timeline on that? Would you want thirty days? I don't care. Right, thirty days or sooner, or sixty days or sooner. Sixty days or sooner, that'll lead them in.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Chair recognizes Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Previous question on the entire matter, Mr. President.
Do you have five members in the queue? Previous question has been called. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the previous question. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. The matter passes. That ends the discussion. We have the item before us. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote. That matter is approved. For which, please. Next item, please.
Item number thirty-eight, called special. There are, inasmuch as members of the public wish to be heard, there is also a meeting motion that has been distributed.
Item thirty-eight. Now, before us, the council calls forward Mr. Stan Sosa.
Mr. President and members of the council, thank you very much for having me here. The Latino Museum of History, Art, and Culture is the only Latino museum in the culture and education corridor here in Los Angeles. In fact, it's the only Latino museum in all of Los Angeles with its huge Latino population. So when the city invoked eminent domain to remove a building from the downtown area, they also passed the motion to set up a task force to help the selection of a new site for the building. The task force has performed, and I would like to thank, in particular, Mr. Jared Miller, who headed the task force, as well as Mr. Phil Trundle from the General Services Department. The task force has elected as a temporary site, the City Mall, a space there in the City Mall. And this is going to be, because we just also are becoming affiliated with this Smithsonian institution this week, this is going to be a win-win for the City Mall and the Latino museum presence there. So I want to thank the city council for having passed a motion for the task force, especially Ms. Jane Perry. And I would like to thank you in advance for all the continued support for the only Latino museum in the downtown Los Angeles. So thank you very much. Thank you very much.
This concludes public comment on item number thirty-eight. Chair recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank Mr. Sosa, Professor Quinones, and all the other board members who've been working hard. They've been working at almost pro like effort to try and find a spot, which striking to me that in a city where there's 1.7 million individuals of Spanish Cerning, almost forty percent of the city that shares this culture, this language, this history, that we are not able to celebrate that history in a much more profound way. And I want to thank them for their hard work. I know everyone has busy schedules, but this is a time where if we are truly going to embrace the diversity of the city, then we're ever going to be establishing a message to our young folks about the notion of self-esteem, about the notion of being proud of your heritage in a manner that we deter them from the gang cultures and from other kinds of vices that basically rule our communities. This is time we need to step up as leaders of the city. We need to call our institutions of financial status, community status, cultural status, neighborhood status, and come together and focus on this project. Thank you very much for your good work.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Zine.
Mr. President, colleagues, as I understand, this is going to be a temporary site for the museum, and a permanent site will be found within a year. An appropriate location for the museum. The amendment I had is a concern and a consideration that the facility that the museum's going to occupy is going to be converted to the General Services Security Operations Center. And the amendment calls for cooperation between General Services and the museum when the refurbishing and the installation of equipment is to take place and that that be done during normal business hours with cooperation between the two entities, and that eventually, within a year, the museum will relocate. That will then become the permanent security operations for General Services Security, and that's the need for the amendment. Originally, there was some problem with the provisions, and this amendment clarifies that it can be done during normal business hours and it'll be done in a cooperative fashion. So I recommend that we support both the amendment and the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. I don't think we need to take separate votes. Let's open the roll on items amended. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote. That is approved. Next item, please. For which? Next item. Now it's time for public comment and non agenda. Opportunity for members of the public to adjust the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward at this time Mr. Mort Allen.
I'm probably the only person down here that doesn't get paid, but I felt there were some few things. The first comment I want to make is, you're talking about funding the neighborhood councils. What makes Studio City so great is that we own our farmer's market, which brings in $200,000 a year profit. The entire amount of money has been spent for landscaping our medians, building, doing trees. We've asked the city for nothing. And I think if more communities would get out there and raise their own money with farmer's markets, as such, Wendy knows, we get four to five thousand people on a Sunday buying all their produce at our farmer's market, and it's really important. Now, I am very, very upset. I personally do not have to like Mr. Brain and Mr. Close, and I don't like what's happening. There's an undercurrent in the Valley of secession. And I'm going to tell you something, everybody loves Alex. They all want him to be the president. But we do have a problem, and it's gotten worse the last month, and I really think you all need to take advantage, to take notice of this. There is an aloofness. Now, we have in Studio City, we have the greatest icon in the Valley. We have the twenty-acre golf course that every movie star plays golf at at driving range. It brings in $1 million. It brings in $1 million a year net profit. It's only $10 million, and the city has refused constantly to buy it, and so it's going to become a senior citizens thing because nobody is stopping it from the city. And I will tell you, the entire community is livid about it, and I don't understand why we can't get Genesis or somebody else to step in there and save it. We don't seem to be getting cooperation from our local office, and this is a major thing. Another major problem, these are just things that are so simple that you could stop this whole thing right now. Secondly, is people are very upset they've got to go to a traveling gentleman's hotel for meetings. We have no meeting room in the Valley. Everything goes to the Airtel Hotel. All it takes is renting a 3,000-foot storefront someplace on the boulevard to have your public hearings and perhaps have Wendy's office or something, so that we're not just going to a hotel because there's no place to go. We have, there's other issues. They just, they filed a lawsuit Friday to stop the east-west busway, which is devastating because we don't have transportation. Now, I think that there's, one other thing I want to mention, you know, Prop Q just passed very, very slowly, and they went to all the different outdoor media companies and asked for billboards. They shut the door. One company, my friend, third channel, gave you all the billboards. Nobody bothered to say thank you or send a thank you note. I mean, I just don't think it's right. And you all know this afternoon that there's a thing in Plumb to assess the billboard companies, $4,770,000 to inspect the billboards, which is going to hurt, because I have 400 lined up for the one LA to go, and I think that that can be postponed, because you've got to get a program going.
Mr. Allen, I'm going to ask you to conclude.
Okay. The rank-and-file people in the Valley are very confused right now, and I think that we've got to go forward, because I only want the city to be better for my children, my children's children, and I think we've got to keep it together and we've got to take it more serious.
Thank you very much. This concludes the comment for today's meeting. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item number thirty-five is a closed-session item, requesting the city attorney to continue that matter until April 12. April 12, that'll be this Friday. Members, without objection, that shall be continued. Councilmembers' request from excuse from council attendance. Councilmember Galanter requests to be excused on April 17 for city business. A motion is required.
Ms. Gruel moves. Ms. Galanter is excused.
And Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused from Wednesday, April, well, tomorrow's evening council meeting for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Zine moves. Mr. Ridley Thomas is excused. The desk is clear. Are there any announcements? Announcements? Mr. Zine.
Announce that tomorrow, the council will meet at 7:00 PM instead of 10:00 AM, and we will meet in the San Fernando Valley at the Madrid Theater, and that is located on Sherman Way in Owensmouth, and Owensmouth is east of Topanga Canyon. The meeting will start at 7:00 PM, and we anticipate concluding approximately 9:00 PM. So we invite everyone to visit the San Fernando Valley, the Madrid Theater, Sherman Way in Owensmouth for tomorrow's council meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
If I can ask everybody to please rise for adjourning motions, beginning with Mr. Burnson.
Yes. Mr. President, members of the council, I would ask that we adjourn in memory of Amos Kraus. Mr. Kraus was a large property owner, landowner in the San Fernando Valley, including the old Talladega property at the corner of Nordoff and Corbin. Also owned the portion that used to be the Broadway and the Broadway Department Store and Northridge Fashion Center, and was responsible for the conversion of the new area there. He's survived by his son Ron, his wife, Mrs. Amos Kraus, and they are currently living in Hillsborough, California. And I'd ask that we adjourn in his memory.
Ms. Galanter. Thank you, Mr. President. I have two. I'd like to ask first that we adjourn in memory of Mrs. Anne Renzi, who was the mother of my constituent, Walter Renzi. She had a long illness, and she was cared for not only by her son, but also by Gene Parker, one of her very active residents in that area and a neighbor, and her housekeeper and friend, Lupe Rodriguez, and they, all of them had a tough time, and we want to extend condolences to all of them and adjourn in memory of Mrs. Renzi. And then I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of John Thomas, who was something of a fixture at Venice. He opened the first Venice Beach Showcase Festival in August 2000 with a poetry reading, and he and his wife, Philomena Long, who survives him, was also a poet, were local honorees when we opened Venice Beach in January of 2001. Mr. Thomas was known as a fixture in Venice, but of course, he was best known for his poetry. And he was described by Charles Bukowski, it's called the infamous bard of low-life Los Angeles, that John Thomas was the best unread poet in America. He was 71 years old and died of congestive heart failure and really is going to be missed. He was known also as the sage of Venice and a number of other generally complimentary and respectful terms, and really, it will be a sad departure from the Venice art scene.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, members of the public, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Aaron Campbell, who some of you will remember from a performance here in the city council chambers. He was a member of the Los Angeles Police Department's pipe band and just 18 years old, and he died in a car accident in Santa Ana on March 29. He's actually a resident of Coldstream, Canada, and for the last six months was a member of the LAPD Pipe Band, which is the top pipe band in the country. He was called the Wayne Gretzky of the drumming world by those who knew him in Canada, and he was an outstanding drummer, always very excited about playing in the band, brought a lot of prestige to this city and to the police department, and his love for pipe band music developed when he was in kindergarten, and his dad belonged to the Kelowna Legion Pipe Band. He had been helping the LAPD Pipe Band prepare for its appearances at the World Highland Championships in Scotland in August. Memorial service was held by the LAPD Pipe Band on Huntington Beach Pier on April 2, and the Pipe Band is currently reassessing its involvement in the World Championships as a result of this tragedy. I'm sure that we can all hear the wailing of his bands playing right now, and we wish him and his family the best, and we'll remember him. Thank you.
Ms. Gruel.
Yes, I'm standing here. The death of Bill Slater, who was the Sun Valley Chamber Government Affairs Chairperson for 25 years. He remained active in the Sun Valley Chamber until last week. His business Apex Electronics is in Councilman Padilla's district. He survived by his wife Charlotte and one daughter and several grandchildren, so I'd like us to adjourn in his honor as well.
Mr. Holden.
President, members, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Mr. Kirby Gray. He would have been 91, birthday that would have taken place later this month. Mr. Gray was born in Hillsborough, Texas. He's a much-loved uncle of Bob and Donna Jones, who are the 10th district residents, and his wife. He survived by his wife, Tilly, and seven sons. Mr. Gray is going to be missed for sure. 91 years of a good life.
Any others? Colleagues who wish to be a co-presenter with Ms. Gruel on the tribute for William Slater. As she mentioned, he established Apex Electronics in 1958 in the Sun Valley area and has since then been a successful businessman and community leader, active in very many national organizations, but most active in the Sun Valley area as treasurer for the Sun Valley Rotary Club for 38 years and a member of the Chamber of Commerce for 33, 25 of which he served as chairman of the Governmental Affairs Committee. In 1985, I want to make a special point to mention that he founded the William J. Slater Award, which recognizes chamber members who are active community leaders and work to bring about positive change in the Sun Valley area. He will definitely be missed. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned. Our next council meeting will be tomorrow, not at 10:00 AM, but at a special time at 7:00 PM. We will see you in Canoga Park.